Can Matt hears?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I'm Matt.
Hey, John, how are you?
Good.
You got all techie and got signed on to this thing, huh?
Well, I got a little help from my friends here.
Yeah, well, if it wasn't for my wife, I would not be here.
Hey, Sean, is that you?
That is, it comes up under David Gurch.
Yeah, I think I sent you my link.
Do you want me to get off and get back on?
Oh, no, I think I can rename you, so.
Okay.
Change your name here. There you go.
All right, seeing that it's two o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The regular meeting for the planning and zoning commission will start here at two o'clock, April 14th, 2021. Will the secretary call the roll?
Mr. Hinckley.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Spiegelberg. Chairman Moore.
Here.
Ms. Hanning.
Right, it looks like we have Mr. Hinckley and Ms. Hanning and myself here on this meeting. I know that Mr. Kennedy said that he's going to try to participate here today. And Mr. Spiegelberg unfortunately is not going to be able to participate today. He is up in Rock River and the roads are closed to get to Laramie. He doesn't have any other way of participating on Zoom here. So we'll move on to excuse absent members. The chair will entertain a motion to excuse absent member Spiegelberg. And at this time, absent member Kennedy of the planning and zoning commission from this meeting.
Chief is on now.
Mr. Kennedy, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. It looks like, let me start that over with the excused absent members. The chair will entertain a motion to excuse absent member Spiegelberg of the planning and zoning commission from this meeting. So moved.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mr. Hinckley and second by Mr. Kennedy. All those, well, we'll call roll on this because we're on Zoom here. Mr. Hinckley.
Aye.
Ms. Hanning.
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. Mr. Spiegelberg has been excused from this meeting. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for the April 14th, 2021 meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, David.
The applicant for item E, Roger Canyon zoning change application, has asked that his application be pulled from this meeting.
Okay. Let's see, so we'll go ahead and take off.
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Kennedy. I was wondering if Jennifer had been able to give us a breakdown of that asphalt specialty case that was decided in February in the Supreme Court.
Well, I think that that would be appropriate, but I think maybe not at this exact time in the meeting.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, no, that would be just fine. Let's see, if we're gonna change the agenda here and removal of item E, public applications. Where would it be appropriate? Probably to put it under other items or announcements.
But I think under other items would be fine.
Okay, so B would be, we'll switch A and B, we'll move the next meeting, discussion on the next meeting to B, and then A can be discussion with the board on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, I would move to accept the agenda with the changes made, as long as no one else has any changes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. We'll go ahead and call, vote on that. Mr. Hinckley.
Aye.
Ms. Hanning.
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
Then Chairman Moore, myself, aye. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minute? Since one meeting. And has everybody had an opportunity to read through them?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second those, I'm just, for lack of a second, I wasn't at the meeting, so I couldn't really speak to the value of the minutes, but I'll approve the motion.
Sure. Do we, so we have a first and a second, do we have any discussion on the minutes at all from members? None, seeing none, okay, so we have a first and a second, we'll go ahead and take a vote then. Mr. Hinckley.
Aye.
Ms. Hanning.
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye, motion carries. At this time, disclosures, the chair will call for any disclosures to be known. Need to be brought to anybody's attention at this time?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Hinckley, thank you, Ms. Hanning.
Well, now that agenda item E is removed, Mr. Chair, I have nothing to declare, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hanning. And I would also, in that same sense as you, I also too, with item E being removed from today's public applications, I don't see anything else that would require me to disclose anything at this point or have any conflicts or anything that need to be brought up. Mr. Kennedy?
I have no disclosures.
All right, very good. The discussion today will be conducted in accordance with the state statutes, the rules of the planning and zoning commission and others applicable laws. I'd ask that any individual who wishes to address the commission to please state their name and their address when they're directing questions or comments to the planning and zoning commission, thank you. We'll get started here, public applications. The first public application we're going to go over here today is the Medicine Bow River Ranch conditional use application. Looks like Joe is presenting this to us, so Joe, if you would feel free to give us the report on this application.
All right, the applicant is Autidol Construction Incorporated. Location is Medicine Bow River Ranch. The project is in the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 21 North, Range 77 West. The request is for conditional use to add a gravel pit. The current zoning is agricultural and current use of the wind farm. The surrounding properties, all properties that surround the applicant's property are zoned agricultural except for one parcel that this parcel wraps around, which is rural residential. The property can be accessed on Lucky Star Wind Farm Access Road. The reviews Albany County Road Bridge Department had no concerns. Laramie Rivers Conservation District. Laura McGinnley, District Clerk, wants to make sure that groundwater and air contamination as well as soil erosion issues are taken care of. Wyoming Department of Transportation, Ryan Shields, District Traffic Engineer, said YDOT has a road use agreement with Lucky Star Wind Farm that includes requirements for hauling aggregates to windmill sites. I recommend they review the agreement with Lucky Star. And Wyoming Game and Fish Department, Amanda Loesch, Habitat Protection Supervisor had three points. The first being that there is a raptor nest to the southwest of the project area, and the applicant should consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service concerning the stipulations that may be associated with the nest. The second point brought up was that there is a sign monitoring plan between Lucky Star Wind Farm, the affected landowners, and Wyoming Game and Fish. Timing of the project should be coordinated with a local biologist, and activity associated with the project should follow guidance outlined in the monitoring plan for Lucky Star Wind Energy Project Albany and Carbon Counties, Wyoming. And lastly, the department recommends as part of the reclamation plan treating noxious and invasive annual grasses that may become established in the project area during the life of the project. The full email is attached. Findings necessary for approval, the applicant has provided the required site plan and/or survey. The proposed conditional use shall not harm the public health, safety, and welfare. Adequate public services are available for the proposed conditional use without creating an undue financial burden on the county. The applicant has addressed the following impacts. Comprehensive plan states that this area is in priority growth area four, which tends to be more remote. We serve largely and sparingly by gravel roads and have low levels of public service. As a result, they have a relatively low growth efficiency rating, meaning provision of public services to these areas is relatively expensive, and they are often in active agricultural or environmentally sensitive areas. Conservation and protection of agricultural operations, wildlife habitat, and sensitive lands is a high priority in priority growth area four. The applicant responded with the establishment of Autidol Construction Incorporated Medicine Bow River Ranch gravel pit will reflect suggestions put forth in Albany County Comprehensive Plan. Leapfrog or strict patterns of development, the applicant responded with development will be confined to the 15-acre perimeter of the gravel pit. No separate mining, development, extensions, or additions will be constructed. Economic impacts, the applicant wanted to address public commentary concerning negative economic impacts. Air quality, the applicant responded with in addition to the applicable Albany County ordinance, autidol construction will be required to adhere to requirements of its Wyoming DEQ air quality division air permit assigned to the mining operation. This permit application is currently under review by DEQ/AQD. Fugitive dust from the mining process, processing, and transportation will need to be controlled. Water application is the most common dust suppression method. Chemical applications to road services is a consideration for haul roads if dust is excessive. No open burning will take place on the site. Water quality, the applicant responded with in addition to the applicable Albany County ordinance, autidol construction will be required to adhere to requirements of its Wyoming DEQ water quality division stormwater discharge permit assigned to the mining operation. This authorization permit has been issued, permit number is WYR 320925. The gravel pit construction will incorporate a perimeter earthen berm to impede offsite stormwater onflow to the site and contain onsite stormwater flow from leaving the mine boundary. The onsite stormwater outfall locations will incorporate best management practices or BMPs to control any sediment discharge. The BMPs used typically are, but are not limited to, check dams, sediment basins, fiber rolls, erosion control nets, and sediment control fans. On-site petroleum storage consists of a berm storage area that is also lined constructed to hold at least 110% of the volume stored. Our staff comment was if a small wastewater system is contemplated on the property as part of the project, the applicant must apply and get approval of a small wastewater permit. Separation of uses, the applicant responded with minimum distance from the proposed gravel pit to the residence/building is two and a half miles to the E and E, to the east-northeast. The mining operation will be surrounded by activity associated with the Lucky Storm, Lucky Star Wind Farm development. Screening and buffering, the applicant responded with the mining operation will be surrounded by activity associated with the Lucky Star Wind Farm development. A buffering distance of two and a half miles, minimum distance to the nearest residence/building will be in place regarding the mining operation. General nuisances, the applicant responded with mining operations will be conducted during daylight hours to eliminate nuisance light and glare. Any light source that may be required will be shielded to direct light downward. Fugitive dust will be controlled at the source with water spray suppression. Noise and other airborne nuisance from mining operation is expected to be minimal due to distance location from residences and public roadways. Traffic. The applicant responded with planned ingress to the proposed mine site is on Wyoming Highway 13, two and a quarter miles southwest of the U.S. Highway 30 and Wyoming Highway 13 intersection. From this point, travel will be on a planned wind farm road for four and a half miles to the mine site. Once mining equipment is mobilized to the site, any mine-related traffic will be concentrated in the area of the mine and the wind tower sites using the mine aggregate. Mine traffic will not impact public access roads. Parking. Applicant responded with parking is provided in a designated area for employees working at the mine site. One space per employee at a minimum of 10 feet by 20 feet. Visitor parking is generally provided in a designated area close to the mine office, three to five spaces. Disabled parking is approved per state, and federal standards loading and/or unloading is done adjacent to the mining area within the mine boundary. Exterior lighting, mining operations are scheduled for daylight hours. Any supplemental lighting by means of light plans is set up to provide personnel a safe environment to perform equipment maintenance prior to or after the typical production work shift. Lights are directed downward at the work area. Refuse and service areas, general refuse generated from mining and construction activities will be disposed of in commercial-grade trash dumpsters provided and serviced by a third-party provider. Signs, required signs will include the mine identification sign required by the Wyoming DEQ Land Quality Division. This sign will be placed at the entrance of the mine boundary to conform to Wyoming DEQ LQD standards and Albany County zoning regulations, Chapter 5, Section 8. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval as listed in this report are incorporated herein as findings of fact. The property is currently zoned agricultural. The applicant needs to turn in a zoning certificate application for their proposed office building. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service should be consulted about the raptor nest. Guidelines outlined in monitoring plan for Lucky Star Wind Energy Project Albany and Carbon Counties, Wyoming should be followed. The applicant wants to have a gravel pit to supply aggregate for the proposed Lucky Star Wind Farm. The applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Includes of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff analysis, impacts to the surrounding area will be minimal. The applicant has provided information that ensures that the impact and nuisances will be minimum. This project is going to be used to supply aggregate for the Lucky Star Wind Farm. The applicant has turned in a zoning certificate for the proposed office on their site plan. If a small wastewater system is contemplated on the property as part of the project, the applicant must apply and get approval of a small wastewater system permit. Our staff recommendation is to approve the Medicine Bow River Ranch conditional use application, CU 0221, based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe, that's very thorough. I appreciate that. Does anybody from the commission have any questions for Joe on this application? Mr. Hinckley, go right ahead.
Yeah, a matter more general, and since we've probably eliminated the most time-consuming element on our agenda, perhaps we could use this for a little educational opportunity. Joe, I think did a great job, and it sounds like from the packet that there was a lot of correspondence or at least communication between you and the applicant, and you ferreted out a lot of the details, and I'm certainly not opposed to the project, but I'm curious just procedurally, when I see findings of fact, those don't strike me as that they really are findings of fact. So maybe I'm kind of quibbling with the words, but since we're doing legally significant decisions here. For example, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service should be consulted as a finding of fact, is that a condition? I mean, are we saying that they have to be consulted, or are we simply observing that it'd be nice if they did? Similarly, guidelines outlined in your finding of fact number five should be followed. And maybe I'm quibbling about the wording, but I'm thinking if this is a official action, you mean must be followed? And are these conditions of the approval that you're suggesting? And this runs throughout all of the various projects that are on our agenda today. The statement, the findings necessary approval as listed in this report are incorporated herein as findings of fact. I think the way that they're put together and worded, it isn't clear what the finding of fact is. We have the applicant's response, and they are fairly complete, but it seems to me what we're looking for is somebody from planning office to say, yeah, they got it right, rather than, yes, this is what they said. An applicant simply addressing all of the necessary elements doesn't get us through to the finish line of, did they adequately address all those elements? So again, can I just, David and Joe, what? Am I missing something here, or should we tighten up our language? Or what exactly is it that we are doing when we say approved based on these findings of fact?
I mean, we're definitely recommending that those things be done. I mean, I guess it's up to you whether it should be required or not. We can tighten up the language if you'd like. If you want to require those things to be done. Those are recommendations that have been provided to us, so I guess what you want to do with them is your prerogative at this point, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something now, this is Keith.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, go right ahead.
With regards to the wildlife issue, we have no jurisdiction over the wildlife. Wildlife belong to either the state of Wyoming or the federal government, and we don't have any jurisdiction, that's merely game and fish's recommendation, and they're the ones who have jurisdiction over that. We have no say whatsoever in that technically, so that's that's one thing. And and we can certainly approve with conditions, but you know, I think we need to be very clear about what conditions those might be, and I think the staff language that's there is based on what is contained in the application. Those are the findings of fact. And conclusions of law stated in the staff report, and that's the reason. And that language is very specific for a reason too, and I think Jennifer may be able to get into that as well, too, when we go over that case a little later, but if the findings of fact and conclusions of law is very important language in here, whether or not we put conditions in there.
And Mr. Chair, just to go one, a little bit further, maybe what we have in our findings should have been more of a staff analysis type item. We could have moved that into there, and that would have been a little bit more clear, it wouldn't have been a finding. I understand what Mr. Hinckley's saying. If we're going to put something in there, maybe it's a shall, you shall do this, you shall do that. And that's kind of the direction that we've got previously from the county attorney's office. Instead of putting actual conditions on things, we put them in the findings because they become part of what, you know, is part of this permit. Once they're in the findings, they're part of the permit, so. So yeah, whatever you'd like to do going forward, you know, staff is okay with. I think staff's thoughts were is that, you know, obviously, we believe that Autidol should work with the fish and wildlife on these issues and, you know, follow that pattern, but you know, as Mr. Kennedy said, I don't know if we have authority to do that or not, since we're not really the, we don't regulate wildlife and those types of things in the county, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gurch. Thank you, Mr. Gurch. And Mr. Hinkley, see your hands up. Go right ahead.
And again, I'm not quarreling with any of that, except as I said, the findings of fact, it seems to me there should be. We as a body have to find certain things in order to approve the, the permit. And, and, and if, uh, so these are, some of these are kind of observations or recommendations. It strikes me, they really aren't the kinds of findings of fact that if we got into one of these that was contested, which this one is not, we would want to, to just tighten that whole thing up, but uh, they have to address signs. Just, I'm just looking at the, at my screen here and the applicant responses thus and such, and the staff comment is none. Does that mean that the staff agrees that signs have been adequately addressed? Otherwise, all you're doing is reporting what the applicant said. And that's, that's, I guess, a statement of fact itself, but, but aren't there certain findings necessary for approval? And if so, those findings should be, it seems to me, uh, laid out in, in quite clear terms with an explicit finding that, that they met their reclamation requirements or that they have filed the appropriate permits or whatever that happens to be. As a, as a general notion, I would be, I, I'm interested in what Commissioner Kennedy said. If Fish and Wildlife Services got this under control, they have to do that. That's great and it's comforting to know that. Similarly, the reclamation requirements that, that DEQ land quality imposes on them, that's useful for us to know that that's all taken care of. But that isn't a finding of fact that is required for us to, to make the, the recommendation. If, if we're seeing the distinction I'm bringing to this. So again, I'm not quarreling with this one at all, but, but just this standard format. Like the first finding of fact as listed in these report, where are those findings of fact listed in this report?
Thank you.
So the, the findings necessary for approval is listed in the staff report. Um, so that is the, the section where um, you know, that we've got that, that bold and you know, that's, that's the section, that's the, the, what we call it, you know? And these are the findings that you have to make basically. When we go through and we go through the, um, the application and see what the, the applicant has written. If, if we don't have any issues with what is being presented, then we're not going to have any comments. It's when we have additional comments, um, that we need to clarify those things. That's when we add our comments as staff. That's typi- typically what we have done um, in our reports, so.
We approve findings of fact, we are approving all of the things that the applicant said because you haven't told us otherwise. Is that the right interpretation of these words?
Yes.
Okay, so staff comment none, we should take to mean staff comment agree.
Yes.
I see, okay. And maybe that would be clearer to a, a outside reader or heaven forbid a court case if that were explicit.
At this point, uh, miss, uh, Mrs. Kern, are you, are you available?
Yes, Chairman Mark.
Uh, what is your uh, take on uh, what Mr. Hinkley says as far as the, the finding of fact, actual wording of it? Um, do we with just the way that uh, um, we, that, that the way staff has presented um, information to us as far as the findings needed necessary for approval. Um, do we need to uh, uh, just change a few of those things or do, uh, do you feel comfortable in the way that um, uh, we're proceeding as fine, uh, as the finding of fact or the findings necessary for approval? And what would your recommendation be?
I, my recommendation, or my initial impression anyway, is that what you're doing right now is fine. Although I do believe Mr. Hinkley has addressed some issues where we should certainly, David and I can sit down and talk about the language and what maybe would be more appropriate language, but still meet the needs of the findings that are necessary to make it clear to anyone who's reading it. So that's certainly something that I can sit down with David and go through, hopefully before your next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kern. Appreciate that. Um, at this point, um, are there any other questions? Uh, Mr. Hinkley or Ms. Hanning or uh, Mr. Kennedy, do you have with this application as far as what was presented to us and, and any questions you have for uh, Joe as far as the application?
I have none and I would like to hear from the applicant, Mr. Chairman. If, if they're available.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We, we certainly will hear from the applicant. Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do have one question, but we'll, we'll wait for Joe to circle back. Um, but you know, maybe, maybe David will know this answer as well. Uh, well, one thing I was just curious about in general, do you know what volume of petroleum they plan on storing now at the site? May, maybe that's something the applicant can, can address when it comes up. Um, secondly, I'm, I'm just curious about that one parcel of land uh, that is zoned rural residential that everything seems to wrap around where, where there is no existing um, home or, or structure there at this time. Um, had, had, is that property owner, you know, they, they probably received notice, public notice. Um, and I just wondered, have you gotten any kind of comments back from the public at all about their, any concerns about the, the gravel pit?
Uh, I have not received any public comment. I don't know about the petroleum though. Maybe that's a question for David.
The applicant?
For the applicant.
No, David. Oh.
All right, yeah, Ms. Hanning, maybe that at that, uh, at that point, as far as um, uh, the petroleum products. Um, and it sounds like to me that uh, we didn't receive, David, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't see many um, notice from any, uh, any members of the public on this application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hanning, do you have any other questions or were those the two questions that you had?
Thank you. That, that takes care of my questions. Thanks. I, I, I guess just to throw in on the topic earlier about um, findings of fact. On what I can relate to you from how the city prepared things for city planning, um, commission and board of adjustment meetings. It would be, um, the findings of fact would often refer to the analysis presented above in any statutes or plans or um, regulations that had to be met were, were sort of referenced. And if there were conditions put into uh, an approval that was usually put at the, in the, in the end with the staff recommendation for approval with the following conditions. And then, you know, would list out those conditions and then that would allow the whole body to vote, you know, on, on the whole thing. Um, so, so just, just an offering of, of the way that I, I know it was handled in, in that case. There's usually more than one way to skin a cat though, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Appreciate your insight. Mr. Hinkley, any other questions concerning the application?
No, no, I'm good. Uh, a good thorough application. Again, thanks to, thanks to Joe for the thorough staff analysis.
All right, thank you. Um, and Mr. Kennedy alluded to the uh, yeah, uh, before uh, hearing from the applicant. So at this time, uh, would the applicant have uh, wished to address uh, the planning commission? Mr. Gurch is the applicant or applicant's representative on our
Yeah, we're unable to hear you, Mr. Hornbeck.
The lip's moving.
Okay, so it's Mr. Hornbeck. Um, Mr. Hornbeck, if uh,
Um, why don't you mute yourself real quick and then I'll try to unmute you, see if that works. Nope. Not working.
Mr. Chairman, uh, perhaps Mr. Hornbeck could, could call in on the Zoom line rather than uh,
Yep.
We'll be here for a second for Mr. Hornbeck and uh, see if we can get him online. So if everybody just hold on to be patient.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, while he's trying to, to get on, um, I did want to make an announcement for those that may have not been on when we started. That item E, Roger Canyon zoning change application was removed from the agenda. So anybody that, that got on to make comments for that, um, that's been removed and it will not be on this agenda. It'll probably be on next month's agenda. So I just wanted to relay that.
Is that just at the last minute or do they give it a reason or do we know anything more than the applicant, withdrawn at the applicant's request or how does that?
I, I was asked to um, withdraw from the, the agenda, so.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, you wanted me to unmute?
Uh, it is uh,
The operator said the host would like you to unmute.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was
There's another gentleman trying to get on and we thought that might be him, but um,
Oh, well, I'll, I'll mute it and do I do a star six again?
Yep, uh-huh.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Did I get through this time?
That you, Mr. Hornbeck?
Yes, this is David Hornbeck.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Hornbeck, thank you for joining us on uh, um, for this meeting here today. And um, I don't, uh, you, you're more than welcome to address the commission. I know that uh, Ms. Hanning, Commissioner Hanning has a question for you and uh, maybe a couple other members might. Uh, but you'd be welcome to address us and, and then if you'd be so kind to, to maybe answer a few questions if that'd be okay.
Absolutely, that's no problem. I was gonna say, by better, uh, as far as formal introduction, my name is David Hornbeck. I am the safety, excuse me, I'm the environmental uh, manager for Optidoll Construction located in Casper, Wyoming. And as indicated, uh, this uh, conditional use application process has been, uh, it's contingent or it's part of, I should say, our uh, state DEQ applications. It had been mentioned our water quality application has been uh, reviewed and been uh, accepted. Uh, the water quality permit has been issued on behalf of this uh, proposed gravel pit. Uh, the air quality permit and the land quality are all contingent upon approval of this conditional use permit. Primarily stating that Albany County uh, says that the land use is appropriate for what we're trying to apply for. Um, right now it is, it's been mentioned also we as, uh, the fifteen acre limited mine operation. Again, it's a sand and gravel quarry. It's not a sand and gravel operation. I get these uh, words kind of mixed up on occasion. It is not a quarry, so we're not be blasting, we're not into hard rock. So it is to produce uh, aggregate for the wind farm projects that surround uh, Rock River is the intent for this. It's a separate application process, separate operation in the eyes of Optidoll, uh, you know, from the actual wind farm uh, processes itself. Uh, I did hear a question came up regarding petroleum storage on the project. Uh, right now, any, we, we look for, we have two ways we can go about this. Uh, with our spill prevention and control countermeasures plan. Uh, I'll kind of keep it basic. Anything less than ten thousand gallons, we can self-certify, which has been our normal practice. And once we breach that ten thousand gallon uh, limits, then we have to have a certified uh, engineer approve our plan. So at this point, we keep it under ten thousand gallons. And what we do have on site that is in its own, obviously contained vessel, we do that with a uh, containment pit that is lined. Uh, usually an earthen berm is the containment structure around. And they are built to contain at least one hundred and ten percent of the volume that's stored within that uh, that location. Uh, we do also have, and these kind of given that, given the, you know, the close proximity of all the work that's going on in the area and other projects we have. Also, we do have service trucks that include fuels and lubricants that travel between uh, locations as well. That is an option we have been, we have used in the past to do minor servicing. But anything that's bulk, we do keep there onsite and it is contained and as in the process I just described. Does that answer that uh, question in particular?
Yes, thank you very much for reassuring me about how the petroleum will be handled at the site. Thanks.
You bet. Uh, that is something we don't take lightly and it's, it's one item that can go from, hey, things are pretty normal, but things are pretty bad really quick. So that's one thing we are uh, looking at all the time from, from our operators, our management onsite and everything. So uh, we do take, take that very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Hornbeck.
Anything else?
Uh, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, Hornbeck, uh, we might have some other questions. Let me ask the other uh, commission members. Mr. Hinkley, do you have any questions for Mr. Hornbeck? Uh, not seeing any for Mr. Hinkley. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for Mr. Hornbeck?
None for me, thank you.
Back to Mr. Kennedy. And Mr. Hornbeck, uh, no questions. Uh, for me, your application to me seems very thorough. And um, we sure appreciate you uh, answering that question for us. Um, relating to the petroleum products and giving the great explanation. Uh, thank you for uh, being on the meeting here.
Absolutely. I appreciate all your time and effort, Joe, as well. Uh, great talking with you. And again, anything else comes up between now and the next event, I'm available for questions, whatever needs to be done, so.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hornbeck. We're gonna go ahead and close, uh, or we're gonna um, move on to opening this application to the public. If there's anybody that's a member of the public that would like to comment on this conditional use uh, permit, uh, please raise your please raise your hand on the participants list and we'll call on you. I'll give you a couple, couple seconds here to to get your hands raised so that if we have any call. On the application. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close this application to the public. And commission, at this point, we're either looking for an approval, a denial, or tabling this conditional use application.
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith.
Yes, Keith.
I would move to approve the Medicine Bow River Ranch conditional use application CU dash zero two dash two one based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of laws stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Do we have a second?
Hanning will second.
Right, thank you, Ms. Hanning. First discussion?
I have none.
None for Mr. Kennedy, none for Ms. Hanning. Mr. Hinckley? None for you, Mr. Hinckley?
No, I'm sorry. I thought I was muted.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Thank you. And then from Mr. Hinckley. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. We got a first and second. Mr. Hinckley?
Hi.
Ms. Hanning?
Hi.
Mr. Kennedy?
Hi.
And Chairman Moore, myself, I, so the Medicine Bow River Ranch conditionally use permit has been approved by the Albany County zoning, planning and zoning commission and be sent forth to the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck, Mr. Hornbeck, and thank you for joining us today.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second application that we have here on today's agenda, item B, which is the Osborne zoning change application. Joe, would you be so kind to give us a fill us in on this application?
All right, the applicant is Osborne Concrete Services, location is at one Cotton Tail Drive. Legal description is this approximately four acre tract in government lots six and seven of section 21, township 15 North, range 74 West. The request is to change zoning from small lot residential to urban residential. Current zoning is small lot residential and current use is residential with one dwelling unit currently existing. Access can be, the property can be accessed off of Cotton Tail Drive and the applicant is requesting a zoning change from small lot residential to urban residential. There were four reviews and no one had any comments. Notice has been provided by post design publication and certified mailing as required. The applicant has provided the required site plans and or survey and the proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestion of the Albany County comprehensive plan, including but not limited to the long range growth plan and priority growth areas. This property is located in priority growth area two. The applicant has addressed the following impacts. Compatibility with surrounding properties, the applicant response was the proposed addition of four new building lots along the eastern side of Cotton Tail Drive would be compatible with the uses found along the western side of said roadway and would be indistinguishable in the nature of the community. The staff comment was a change in zoning in this area would not make a huge impact to what priority growth area two has stated, screening, buffering, incompatible zoning districts. The applicant had a response of no impacts, consistent patterns of development. The applicant responded with the proposed addition of four new building lots along the eastern side of Cotton Tail Drive would be consistent with the uses found along the western side of the said roadway and would be indistinguishable in nature of the community, no adverse pattern of development is planned. Economic impacts, the applicant responded with the economic impact of four new buildings along the Cotton Tail, along Cotton Tail Drive would increase the value of the neighboring lands by the aesthetic enhancement of the former unmaintained subject parcel. The new lots would also provide an increase to tax revenues. No negative impacts expected. Natural and environmental resource impacts, the applicant responded with no impacts are anticipated to the natural and environmental resources of the subject property or surrounding community. At maximum, there will be a change from an unmaintained, small, erodible pasture and to maintain yards with controlled runoff of residential structures. The staff comment was wastewater and water will need to be taken care of. Wastewater needs to follow the Albany County wastewater regulations and Seven Mile Water District needs to give permission to have extra taps. Cultural resource impacts, the applicant responded with the proposed new lots would have no impact on the cultural resources as they sit outside the former Fort Sanderson Reservation adjacent to the subject property and are consistent with the development of Cotton Tail Drive. No negative impacts on cultural or archaeological sites are anticipated as the site was formally developed and resided on. Road network impacts, the applicant responded with the volume of traffic on Cotton Tail Drive will potentially increase by a factor of four households. Cotton Tail Drive already exists at approximately a low to medium volume driveway capacity. And the addition of four households will provide no further hindrance to the road network currently in place. The proposed common access to lot three and lot four will help decrease the flow of new traffic volume along the roadway by creating a single point of convenient access for two lots at a single point on the existing roadway. Impacts to public services, utilities and public facilities. The applicant responded with impacts, public services will include four connections to septic and water facilities as well as four connections to power, gas and communication services. The findings necessary for approval as listed in this report are incorporated here in its findings of fact. The property is currently zone small lot residential. The property is a priority growth area two. The applicant wants to make this lot into a four lot subdivision, which will require urban residential zoning. Upon acceptance of this proposal, the applicant will need to complete and turn in a subdivision application to the county planning office. Seven Mile Water District needs to give permission for additional taps. And the applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Inclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff analysis is this property is in priority growth area two, which would allow for an urban residential zoning. Impacts to the surrounding area will be minimal. The applicant has provided information that ensures the impacts and nuisances will be minimum. Yesterday, I believe, we got confirmation that Seven Mile Water District did approve three additional taps. So that has been taken care of and the staff recommendation is to approve the Osborne Land Use Application LUC O two two one based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any members of the commission that have any questions for staff? Mr. Hinckley, go first and Ms. Hanning, you can go second.
My my notes that went through are basically the same as before. And so just another example for for you, David and Jennifer, to work on is, for example, that is, will enhance the values, a finding of fact that that this commission is being asked to endorse because I don't know that we have found that and yet it's kind of in the in the list of conditions. And then the Seven Mile Water District is an interesting case. Now, it sounds like that's been taken care of and I'm sensitive Commissioner Kennedy saying, we're not trying to re usurp anybody else's authority, but I would not want the commission to get into a position of approving something that then that approval was used as leverage against some other body that has its own approval mechanism. So it sounds like that's that has already happened, but I'm wondering, would something like that be appropriate for us to condition our approval on? Again, I'm just using this as now an example of this concern about getting everything in the right place. So maybe you could just address those procedural things, but let's say they had not gotten their permission. Is that something that that we would simply want to note that they need or would we want to make our approval conditional upon receiving that?
Mr. Chair, with that question, because they're asking to change the zoning to urban residential, you know, that's, that's one of the conditions really of using urban residential for that size of lot that they want to do. So I would say yes, that we would want to condition, you know, the application on that. But as Joe said, we did get minutes from their last meeting and they did approve that. But yeah, I, that would be my recommendation. Because there wouldn't be a point to change it to urban residential if if they couldn't then use the lot for that zoning because they couldn't, you know, meet the requirements of having some kind of centralized water or sewer, so. Thank you.
Ms. Hanning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Joe, can you correct me if I'm wrong about about this without rezoning it and if it were to remain small lot residential, you'd be able to fit two lots on the available acreage and, okay, and in this case, they they're asking to go urban residential for four lots, yet they're they're only been given permission for three taps. So, well, I guess so. One question I have is, what do you see happening with four lots, three taps, or maybe that's none of our business and that's the problem of the applicant to to resolve later, I guess.
There's already a house there, so that tap is already included.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. The second question I have, I think this was answered by email when this was on our agenda originally. So even though this is called a sewer district, everyone is actually on separate septic tank leach field systems. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, septic.
So out outside of the folks on Seven Mile, Nine Mile, who are getting city water from from the main that goes through, are there very many private well users on the fringe of that?
I, I think if they're pretty large tracts of land outside of that, it's mostly agricultural, that I, I don't, I don't know of any others that, I guess we don't know that. We haven't really researched that, but.
Do, do you get the sense that this area would have sewer run to it anytime soon, or do you see it as being kind of outside of the urban? The urban growth zone identified in the comprehensive plan where where more dense housing was anticipated that it would be easily hooked on to city utilities at some point?
I, I don't think it's likely unless this water district decided to become a water and sewer district and, and, you know, install their own wastewater treatment system, which I think is very unlikely. So, yeah, it'll be waste, it'll be small wastewater systems out there for the foreseeable future, I would, I would guess, but.
Okay, that, that was my impression, looking at it geographically and then also just in the comprehensive plan. I guess, I guess my last question is, when I, when I look at the comprehensive plan, and I, I know that's just a guiding document, it's not the the be all and end all of all things. It seems like in these priority growth area twos that small lot residential is, you know, already in existence. And every now and then in in different places around the county, you'll see like a little commercial lot, maybe it's a local store or something serving the community there. But I typically am not seeing urban residential zoning out in some of these areas. And so I wonder what your thoughts were about. It's, it's almost a little precedent setting to me and I just, I wondered what your thoughts were on that.
So, Mr. Chair, I would, would just say that the only urban residential zoning we have in the county are in areas where we've actually changed the zoning to urban residential. When we updated our zoning map, when, when it went through the process, there was not urban residential that was updated anywhere. I could probably count on one hand how many parcels we have that are urban residential. And so just to discuss a little more urban residential itself, there's kind of categories within that that zoning that allow different densities. So for instance, in this instance, they will have available a water tap, right? So they'll have centralized water, which allows them to go to one acre lot size. If they go, if they have a wastewater or a centralized wastewater, I can't remember what it is there, but then the the minimum lot size is something else. If they have water and sewer, they can go down to like a 10,000 acre lot size. So so really, in my mind, the only places that are, you know, that we should zone urban residential are going to be in a priority growth area two, because if it's in a priority growth area one, that doesn't mean that they have water or sewer available. That just means they're next to the city. And if they annex, then they're going to not even go through our process. So really, as a county, if we're gonna, you know, approve any of these zoning changes for small residential, it's going to be in an existing water district or water and sewer district, so.
Thank you for that explanation. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Good points and good discussion on that. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions or comments for staff?
I have none. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Hinckley, I see your hands up. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that to the point that Commissioner Hanning brought up. I had read the statement impacts to public services will include four connections to septic and water facilities to imply that septic and water facilities were public services, but that is not the case. So thank you for that explanation. So what we're faced with here is approving four one acre lots on individual septic. And, and I think that is of some concern. Were that to be run through the the standard DEQ chapter 23 approval of a subdivision, it would have a very small chance of approval. So, yeah, I had not understood that from the applicant's response. But, but, but just so I'm clear, that's the case. Everybody out there is on an individual septic on these quite small lots. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Aware of any water quality concerns? Has the central water system alleviated any concerns with local groundwater quality or? Do we know?
I have not heard anything about groundwater quality up there. I don't know.
Mr. Gurch, and as far as what we're doing just at this point right here is, is we're just dealing with the zone change to urban. At a later date, they'll come with their preliminary and final plats. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And if they, if they go ahead as proposed, then they would go through DEQ their process as well because there's four lots. If they did three lots, I can't, no, I think, I think for, because it's an existing subdivision, I think they have to do the DEQ report regardless. Is that right, Joe? I, I think that's what it is. I, I mean, I'd have to check on that for sure, but for sure, four lots would have to go through the DEQ process. So at least there would be that oversight, you know, in that way and that report done, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gurch. So at this point, you know, we're just looking at the proposal to change from small lot residential to urban residential. And when the time comes to do their split, we are going to get the appropriate reports from DEQ about groundwater to answer the questions that Mr. Hinckley had brought up about what the groundwater possibility of any contaminations having septics on one acre lots, correct?
Yeah, it will go through that process.
Correct. Okay, very good. Mr. Hinckley, does that help answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you. That was quite helpful. I, I had gotten lost on that small lot subdivision and who qualified and how, how all that works. So appreciate the guidance, Mr. Gurch.
Well, very good question and, and I know that that in this. Well, very good question, and and I know that that in this process, those things are on our mind. We're looking at, you know, step four, but really what we're looking at right here is just step one. But they're good things to have in our mind and and good questions to bring up and. Be dealing with down the road and what's coming down the pipe. So any other questions from any other commission members? Not not seeing any at this time, I will give an opportunity to the applicant to. If the applicant or applicant's representative would like to address this commission if they'd like.
Mr. Chair, I I don't see the applicant's representative on here. I thought they were on earlier, but I don't see him now.
I I believe that you are correct. I guess at this point. Mr. Gurch, as far as. Having the applicant be available, I don't think. It can see the regulations if they're not here too calm. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It it's your prerogative whether, I mean, you you have the opportunity to table it if you want to. However, if you don't have any issues with it, there's no reason, or, you know, you have all of your questions answered that that they should be answering. Then there's no reason to, I guess, hold it up here. So, but yeah, there's nothing to hold you back from making a recommendation at this meeting.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and from this point, let's go ahead and. Open this up to public comment. And before we make a decision or do anything, it'd be good just to hear from public comment. And so at this time, if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on the. Application for for the Osborne Concrete Services Inc. Changing their zoning from small lot residential to urban residential in the county. At this time, we'll give a few minutes and please raise your hand and and we'll call on you and and hear from the public. Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this meeting. I guess I pose a question to the other commission members. Do any other commission members have an issue with the applicant or applicant's representatives not being available? Or are there questions that possibly commission members might have for the applicant or applicant's representative?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And seeing both Ms. Hanning and Mr. Hinckley shake their heads, no. I think that that would be appropriate for us to move forward. I think, in my opinion. You know, being that this is a zone change, I really don't have a whole lot of questions as far as. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It, I think Mr. Hinckley and Ms. Hanning did bring up their questions about the septic and groundwater. But I believe when the application moves forward and we do actually see a subdivision of land, you know, plating of land. And I think that our question, we we might have more questions. I think it'd be more imperative that the applicant or applicant's representative is available for that point. So we'll move forward here. At this point, do we have a motion to approve this application of the zoning change? Do we have the motion to deny it, or would the commission desire to table it?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith. I would move to approve Osborne land use change application. LUC dash zero two dash two one based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of laws stated in the staff report. And if there's a second, I would, I do have a little bit of a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Do we have a second? Mr. Hinckley or Ms. Hanning, a second or? No second?
I believe you could do that, Mr. Chairman.
I do. I I believe I can. I just see if either of them would like. At this point, I'll go ahead and make a second. So we've got a first for Mr. Kennedy and a second for myself. And let's have some discussion. Mr. Kennedy, what is your?
My my thought process is not to hold this up bureaucratically. Because this moves on to the county commissioners for their approval. And then they can actually. Apply with DEQ to find out those questions that Mr. Hinckley had regarding the. Use of the septic systems and and that. And and in their mind, there's no sense in going ahead with the study itself. With with involving DEQ until they have a zoning change. And and essentially, this is the first step in the process for them to go ahead and and go to the EQ. To get that study done. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Yeah, I would I would agree with that. This is the first step before you spend a bunch of money on planning and plating and surveys and stuff. It's it's good to see if you're even able to do what you'd like to do with your piece of ground. Any discussion from Commissioner Hinckley or Commissioner Hanning? Go ahead, Ms. Hanning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I guess, you know, you bring up some important points about the amount of capital expenditure. That a developer would start to undertake to demonstrate that they can. Fit four more septic tank leach fields out in this area safely. And and I guess I I just want you to know that in in all cases of septic tank leach fields. I'm I'm not supportive of them being situated on smaller and smaller parcels. Because my personal experience as a homeowner in different locations around the country. With small lot residential septic tanks. And my professional experience as a geologist who's worked on preventing contamination to the groundwater. Sometimes from septic tank leach fields as as well as other nitrogen sources. I I don't believe that you could put in a septic tank leach field in in this kind of situation. Even on a small lot that it's already zoned for and be protective of groundwater quality of the state. So I I won't be able to support. Further down the road on this, and I and I want the applicant to know, you know, right up front. That I that I'm not going to be able to support. Small septic tank leach field, small lot uses. And I I would hate for them to start investing in it without knowing that at least one of of the recommending body. Thinks it's it's not a good zone change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Hinckley?
Those concerns, but but I've also have some concern about this whole idea of creating urban residential nodes. Out in the county. I mean, we're kind of creating a an ad hoc town out in the county. And I have some concerns about that. I confess, I have not thought that through completely and. Up to be it, I guess I should have made a motion if I got that way. I would table this. Just giving us an opportunity to to investigate the current conditions out there. And reconsider carefully the desirability of of, well, building a town as the as the urban residential implies. So I will vote no on the motion. To be considered further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Mr. Gurch, do you want to give a background on why we do have an urban residential zoning in the county?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chair. So. This, when they, when we did our comprehensive plan back in 2008, it was adopted back then. We. You know, the the people of Albany County decided they wanted to split up. Our different land uses that we had at the time or zoning that we had. We only had one residential zone at the time. And in that residential zone, there was, there was kind of a, you know, if you have this, then you can do this type thing in it. And so when we did the comprehensive plan, they split the rural residential up into two, three different categories. We've got rural residential, so that's your five eight, five acres to 34.9 acres. And then they have the step down, which is the more dense, the smaller residential, which is two to five acres. And so both of those are more like, you're going to do onsite well, onsite septics. And so that was was what they came up with. And then when we got to small lot residential, that was more of the, or not small lot, the urban residential. That's the more, you know, dense kind of city type, you know, deal, depending on what they have. If they have, like I said, if they have, you know, just water, you know, centralized water, then they can go down to the one acre lot. If they have water and sewer, they can go down to 10,000 acres. And and then I can't remember what the the sewer one was. But so that was, that was what was come up with the comprehensive plan. So that obviously carried over into our regulations. So our zoning regulations now mimic what the comprehensive plan has identified as acceptable. They they felt at the time, and honestly, the lot sizes are based on, you know, what we know about septic systems. And in the 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 ability to site them on a property. And so, so obviously, if you have have the, you know, the the water on the property, then they feel like you can go down to to one acre. And and it came through through that public process, through the comprehensive plan process, and then adoption through the zoning regulations. So. So that that's how all of the the new zoning came to be. And, you know. I mean, I I don't know what studies or information on water quality and the impacts that those have were taken into consideration. But, you know, that's that's where we came from. That's where we're at. So that's that's why we have that zoning, so.
Mr. Hinckley, I'll get to you in one second here. David, thank you for that explanation. I think. Just a couple of thoughts that that I have is is, you know, part of the reason. We do have urban residential is because we do have places like Centennial that. The, you know, Centennial was planted in 1901, and we're gonna, if you read through the packet and and what we're gonna do here. Towards the end of the meeting, current planning process projects. Centennial Water District, they do have water and they do have sewer, and they do have lots that are platted in Centennial from 1901. That are 26 feet by 132 feet deep. And so I think it is a a tool that Albany County can use to address certain areas that have been previously platted. If you look on this and knowing the history of this property, this was at one time out here, not where this particular piece. Where these individuals are looking for a zone change. And we do need to keep in mind, this is a zone change. It's not a plating change. We don't even have all the information that we need to approve. A splitting of land. But again, this is the first step. But as far as the residential or the urban residential zoning. I think, because I was on the on this board, I think the the two that were on the board when we went through the. That change of residential were John and myself and kind of the discussion that we'd had time was. We're looking at a few things that have kind of taken place in Albany County over the last 15 years as far as. You know, large groups coming in, splitting up 10,000 acre ranches. And David, I don't mean to correct you, but you keep saying 10,000 acre lots, and you mean 10,000. And I know that you mean that, but that maybe for the correction in the notes that, you know, David means 10,000 square foot for. Lots that are platted. With centralized water and centralized sewer. But one of the the big discussions that we had at that point was, is if an individual. And this gets into the theory of subdividing and 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 growth in Albany County. And we look at, if a person has a, you know, 50 acre piece or 100 acre piece. Do we want up, do we want to have five acre pieces or 35 acre pieces or more of the countryside? Tore up with subdivisions, because most people who do end up developing or do subdivide land are looking at it for, you know. Twofold, you know, to provide a land, you know, land or housing for people and to to make a profit. And. A good example of this is the Wild Horse Ranch, which is, was at that time when they did it. It was exempted from state statute, and they went in and they. They're exempted by state statute to be able to split 35 acres or greater. And since that development, the state of Wyoming has put a restriction on that of not more than 10 acres per sec. Or 10 lots per section, 35 acres or greater. But I guess the point of it and the discussion that we had about it is, is. Are. Better, are having centralized water systems for places in the county good? So that we do not tear up all of the countryside and fulfill that need. And again, this is all theoretical, and and we can get into this discussion as well, too. But at the time, that's what we were thinking, that in instead of that demand for larger tracts of land to be split up. If there is a centralized water. Line that that could be utilized. And knowing that in Wyoming, there's a lot of places where there isn't potable water. And how could we utilize that? How could we provide it? How could people use that and utilize maybe smaller, a little bit smaller lots? In the county with with that centralized water. So that's kind of a little bit of a background on why. We do have that zone. On the hit it out there nine mile, they, prior to them creating that nine mile water district. Those individual lot owners and residents out there didn't have good water, and most of them did have to transport their water from from town. And so, you know, just kind of a thought, the lots next, the land next to this parcel used to be a trailer park. And then at some point, long ago, it got split up and deeded out into individual lots. And I think that they're actually quite a bit smaller than what we're looking at here. Because what the individual applicant on this one's looking at is one acre, where I think that those in that subdivision are quite a bit smaller. But anyways, that's just a thought, and I just thought I would share that. Mr. Hinckley, you had your hand up. Go ahead and add whatever you'd like to discuss.
Thank you very much for that, Chairman Moore, and and it's a it's a valid point. Centennial, of course, they they've been kind of an ad hoc community over the years, and they eventually got to the point where they put in a central sewer system. Before they put in a central water system, now they have both. Looking more like a community. So now I'm looking at the zoning map and and we're asking ourselves kind of where is this going? How how big could this, could this urban node get? Mr. Gurch, Mr. Moore, could either of you offer us any any thoughts there? Obviously, to go further east would require a zoning change from agricultural rather than from small lot to rural. Any any thoughts on what does build out look like in this this little node?
I think, Mr. Hinckley, I think the important thing to keep in mind is. Number one, it'd be what would be the capacity or what would be the availability of water for that district? And what, as far as when they're. Of their district, it encumbers a certain legal description. of their, uh, district, it encumbers a, a certain legal description, certain, a certain bit of ground, kind of like the South Laramie Water District. Uh, kind of like when people create, um, road districts. And so, uh, that would be the first step. But as far as determining on what the size is, I don't think that that's, uh, necessarily, uh, something that we would know at this point. Uh, water capacity would be the big part if people wanted to continue to live rurally, on smaller acre, acreage lots that, uh, would have water provided to them, uh, from a centralized source like this in the Nine Mile Water District. But to ask the question of, well, what's that look like? Uh, I don't have that answer. I don't know what the, the demand for growth is going to be. I don't know, uh, what the capacity of the, uh, the line and, and that city lines from the tree, it's actually a city line. It's from the treatment plant west of town. And so I, I feel like probably the, the water district, uh, the people that, or the users out there and the people that, uh, uh, live out there are, are the ones that determine, uh, how many caps will be, um, allowed off it. But as far as the size or how big that's going to be, you know, I, I don't have an idea. I think that what's important is, is when the subdivision does come down, um, and again, what we're discussing here is, is just the zoning change. But when the subdivision does come down, what will be really important to hear and, and hear from is the DQ report on what that does to any water quality or what the proximate proximity is to any other wells that could be affected by putting, uh, a, a number of septics in a certain area.
And, and just one more, cause this is a typical of some, some nodes around the county. Why wasn't this, when you did the zoning, why, why wasn't this tagged as urban residential? Before, because those are all non-compliant lots to the west, are they not?
Uh, grandfather lots, grandfathered lots, yeah.
Yeah, which makes them non-conforming lots, if I'm understanding the terminology correctly, what, and, and, but, was there a reason? Why not? Why didn't you zone those as urban at the time?
Uh, to, to, uh, to urban at the time. Um, and I don't know that question, uh, Mr. Gertz, do you, uh, do you remember why we, uh, uh, didn't change that zoning on those lots?
Um, from my understanding, from the, you know, the zoning advisory committee and the fine zoning meetings, um, basically our zoning was just kind of to say, this is what's being done here. Um, and then, I mean, like I said, we, we didn't zone anything proactively urban residential, nothing was owned urban residential. So, um, I, now this is just my memory and I, and maybe it's just opinion, but my, my, my understanding was the philosophy of these groups that worked on these projects, um, was just to kind of keep it how it is, but you know, reserve the right to change as, as development happens. And so people would come in like today, you know, the Osbournes are coming in and asking for this. And, and then we would analyze whether this is appropriate or not. So, um, so yeah, that, that's, that's the best I can come up with from, from my memory of those meetings quite a while ago, so.
So thank you, David. Uh, Mr. Hinkley, do you have any other comments or more discussion?
No, thank you. That's good background.
Well, thank you for your, uh, comments. Appreciate it. It's all good thoughts and, and visiting about this. So at this point, we do have a first and we do have a second. Um, and I'll go ahead and, uh, call the, uh, the vote on this for this application. Uh, Mr. Hinkley?
No.
Uh, Ms. Hanning?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. And so, uh, we have a no from Mr. Hinkley, a no from Ms. Hanning, uh, yes from Mr. Kennedy and yes for myself, and I do believe a tie, uh, of the, uh, um, Planning and Zoning Commission is a, um, is a denial. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Gertz?
Um, from my understanding, the motion dies, so it doesn't mean that anything was denied or approved, it just means the motion died. Now, um, I would obviously, um, defer to Jennifer Curran on that, so.
Chairman Moore, I believe that's correct, that the motion dies and then it can be reconsidered. If the commission were to be able to do that, I believe, but I will do that research and let you know.
And, and Mr. Chairman, in the meantime, I would move to table this application so that we can bring it up at the next meeting then.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, that sounds good. Um, as far as tabling the item, uh, Ms. Curran, this would be, um, and to be honest with you, I think this is the first time in nine years that I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we have a two-two split and a, uh, uh, motion is denied. So the members of the commission just got to bear with me for a second, cause this is new territory for myself. Uh, as far as, uh, tabling this item, do we need to have a motion? You have the motion to table, do we need to take a vote on that?
Is a motion to table appropriate? I guess again, I.
Yes. Yes, it is.
You've defeated the, the motion?
Well. Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Hinkley, cause it's new territory for myself, so it's a great question.
I'm, uh, I'm pretty sure it is in order with parliamentary procedure, so.
Okay, and so that, uh, also two, do we need?
I will second, second Keith's motion if the motion is, is in order, as I indicated, I would have in the first place.
Okay, okay, very good. Um, so we, we have a motion to table and we have a second for Mr. Hinkley. Do we have any discussion? Not seeing anybody, any from anybody. Um, I guess I'll go ahead and take a, uh, a, a vote on this. Mr. Hinkley?
Aye.
Oh, that was an, was that an aye?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Moore, myself, aye. So, uh, public applications, be the Osborne zoning change, change application, um, has been tabled till next month's meeting. I will move on here to public application C, which is the Peterson zoning change application. And it looks like Joe, you have this one. Um, go ahead and, uh, give us the, uh, uh, description on this application.
All right. Matt and Heidi Peterson are the applicants. Uh, location is ninety-three Stevenson Road, legal description is Honey Creek Ranch, tract eighteen of section one, township thirteen north, range seventy-three west. The request is to change zoning from agricultural to rural residential. Current zoning is agricultural. Current use is residential, uh, one dwelling unit, uh, currently exists. Uh, the property can be accessed off of Stevenson Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting a zoning change from agricultural to rural residential. There are five reviews on this and no one had any concerns. Uh, notice has been provided, uh, by posted sign publication and certified mail as required. The applicant has provided the required site plans and/or survey. The proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the Long Range Growth Plan and the Priority Growth Areas. Uh, this property is in Priority Growth Area Four. The applicant has addressed the following impacts. Compatibility with surrounding properties, the applicant responded with the split would be compatible with the subdivision and the surrounding lots and the lot splits have already been approved in the Honey Creek subdivision. Staff comments is a change in zoning area and this, a change of zoning in this area would not make huge impact to what Priority Growth Area Four stated. Screening and buffering of incompatible zoning districts, the applicant responded, there is no screening or buffering that would need to be done between incompatible uses. Uh, consistent patterns of development, the applicant responded with the split would be consistent with other lot patterns in the development. Economic impacts, the applicant responded with there would be no negative economic impacts to the surrounding properties. Natural and environmental resource impacts, the applicant responded with there would be no negative natural or environmental resource impact, impacts. Uh, the staff comment is if any new wastewater systems need to be installed, wastewater will need to be dealt with according to the Albany County Wastewater Regulations, uh, cultural resident, uh, cultural resource impacts, the applicant responded with there would be no negative impacts to any historical or archaeological sites. Road network impacts, the applicant responded with there would be no negative impact to the existing road network. And impacts on public services, utilities and public facilities, the applicant responded with there would be no negative impact to the existing public services, utilities or facilities. Findings of fact, uh, the findings necessary for approval, as listed in this report, are incorporated herein as finding of fact. The property is currently zoned agricultural. The property is in Priority Growth Area Four. The applicant wants to make this lot into a two lot subdivision, which will require, uh, a rural, a rural residential zoning. Upon acceptance of this proposal, the Planning and Zoning Commission may hear the staff report for the Champ subdivision application. The applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Includes of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff analysis impacts to the surrounding area will be minimal. The applicant has provided information that ensures the impacts and nuisances will be minimum. If this application is accepted, the Champ subdivision application may be heard. Staff recommendation is to approve the Peterson Land Use, Land Use Change Application, LUC oh three two one, based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and includes the law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Um, and it looks like with this application too, uh, to follow this applicant, just where everybody knows this, uh, is a, uh, a zoning change and it looks like we have the follow-up application right after the Champ subdivision as far as splitting the land. Um, are there any questions the commission has for, uh, staff? Mr. Hinkley?
Um, yeah, and obviously we're, we're doing two things at once here, so, so I'll jump in and ask a, just a brief question from the staff analysis on the next item. It says, if the variance is granted, I didn't understand the variance that was being requested. So what, what did I miss there? Just to get me on procedural ground. That's on the staff analysis of the, of the subdivision application. It talks about a variance.
All the others in the office?
I think that's Gordon talking about the road.
Oh. Is this in the zoning application or the?
No, it's in the, it's in the subdivision application, but it, it talks about a variance. I'm wondering if that ricochets back into our zoning discussion, what, what?
No, so the variance would be for a standard that's, that's actually in the subdivision regulations. So when the zoning one applied to the variance that's requested in the, um, in this other report. So there, there are two different things. So the variance is just for the standard within, there's a variance process within the fighting and subdivision regulations. So there's two different regulations. We've got our zoning regulation and our subdivision regulations, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you'll explain the variance to us in a minute.
Yeah.
When we get to that.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Hinkley.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions you have on the, the, the change from, uh, in zoning?
There was a, in the, in the covenants for the subdivision, it talked about not allowing lots less than thirty five. So again, I guess, it's like I'm jumping ahead, say so, but I'm, I'm wondering if we are doing something that's incompatible with the covenants that are currently in place for the subdivision.
No, do you want to discuss the covenants? You can. Okay, so on the covenant, there are covenants on the property, um, and they, they allow for one split done by family affidavit, um, subdivision, which is an exemption through the state. However, this lot specifically is allowed to split into three parts, I believe, um, is what's in the, the covenants. Um, and so, so they can actually split it into three parts according to the covenants, so. So there's nothing conflicting there.
There's a special covenant for that specific lot?
Yes, yeah.
I see. All right, I, I missed that. Good, good to have you guys keeping us on track. Okay, thank you Chairman Moore, those were the only concerns I had was just kind of the compatibility and making sure the gears mesh. Thank you.
Yep, and I believe you'll, you'll have that, uh, question again here on it, uh, application or on public application Dean. So we'll get, we'll circle back to you, uh, on that as well and give you opportunity to ask that question again, cause I'd like to know as well. Uh, Ms. Hanning, uh, do you have any, uh, uh, comments for staff, questions for staff?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions, just an observation that poor Joe is having to do all the staff reports today.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, uh, any questions or concerns, comments for staff?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, and myself as well, I don't, I don't have any at this point. Um, and, uh, I'd like to hear from the applicant. So at this point, um, uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative, if you'd like to address the, uh, uh, commission and staff and, uh, a- answer any questions that maybe we might have for you.
I don't think I have any, uh, specific questions.
Sorry, go ahead.
If you have anything.
Oh. This is John Erickson talking right now. I'm working with Matt on this project. Uh, Joe explained it very concisely, it's just simply a thirty five acre, uh, existing tract that he'd like to split into two, two lots.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Erickson, and, and thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Peterson. Um, Commission DA's have any questions for, uh, the applicant or applicant's representative? Seeing both burn and, uh, more shake their heads no, and Mr. Kennedy?
None, thank you.
And thank you, thank you, Mr. Erickson, and thank you, Mr. Peterson. Um, at this point, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like, that would wish to speak on, uh, the zoning change, uh, please, uh, raise your hand and, and we'll call on you and I'll give a couple of minutes here. Probably not a couple of minutes, but probably at least a minute. Not seeing any hands up, I'll go ahead and close this portion of the meeting to the public to comment on, uh, the Peterson zone change. At this point, uh, from the commission, I'm looking for a motion to either approve, deny or table the Peterson zoning change application.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the Peterson Land Use Change Application, LUC dash zero three dash two one, based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning, for your motion and, and thank you, Ms. Kennedy, for your second. Uh, any discussion? Not seeing any from the commission members, we'll go ahead and take a, take a vote here. Um, Mr. Hinkley?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. So motion carries, uh, the Peterson zoning change application will be, uh, sent on, uh, to the Board of County Commission, Commission with recommendation of approval from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we'll move on to public applications. This app, uh, application is the Champ subdivision application. Uh, this coincides with, uh, the zoning change that we just did approve. Uh, Joe, uh, is there any additional information that you'd like to, uh, enlighten us with as far as this application?
Um, I know that Bill Gorman had some questions regarding the flats, the deed and the reciprocal easement. I think that's, I think that he is on here. Also, I see the typo, it's just a typo left in from a different, um, a different subdivision.
The variance.
The variance.
That shouldn't be in there, it was left over from a different.
That's my fault. But other than that, um, I don't believe anything super different, so maybe if Bill wants to talk or John wants to.
Uh, Mr. Gorman, um, the, I saw the items that you had mentioned on, um, uh, the comments that you had, have those been corrected, Mr. Gorman?
Mr. Chairman, um, after I got some additional information on.
Mr. Chairman, um, after I got some additional information on kind of the general end of where the county road Ends, um, my concerns have been eliminated, uh, as far as the, uh, Easements go from the, uh, supposedly vacated county road. Uh, what I was worried about is a kind of a phantom piece of, uh, land out there that had been a county road, but Uh, was never really vacated properly. And it could have been, you know, like on some of these properties, but I believe based on where the county road ends. Uh, seeing that a little bit better now that my concern is no longer valid, so I think we're good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman, and, and thanks for your comments. Um, at this point right now, do any members of the commission have any questions with, for staff? As far as the, uh, plating and, um, the, the subdivision part of, uh, this application. Mr. Hinkley, go right ahead.
Okay, yeah, just a quick one for, uh, for Mr. Gurch, and I think you alluded to it, David, earlier, that there had been lot splits. As I was just looking at the plat, it looks like perhaps the lot, uh, one, one over to the east has been split. So just, could you elaborate on, on the history of the subdivision with respect to these splits?
Yeah, so, um, when they, when they did this subdivision, which, um, wasn't, didn't go through the county process. It was more of a, a survey plaque to get filed, and there's an exemption that this, you know, through the statutes, they were able to create this. Um, the covenants were drafted basically saying that, um, for all these properties are allowed to do one split. Um, and it, and it needs to be done through kind of the exemption process, so basically a family exemption. So you can buy it and then give it to a family member. Um, and so I believe that's how that other lot there right next, or, you know, close to that property was split is through that exemption process, so. That's all I know. I really don't know a whole lot about this area, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinkley, any other questions?
And then, well, perhaps Mr. Peterson could, could weigh in on that. I, I was just curious when I brought up the air photo, how few of the lots appeared to be occupied. Could you just give us a little background on the subdivision and its, and its history and its occupancy?
Yeah, you bet. Um, I was actually the very first home that, uh, built out here, uh, about thirteen years ago. Um, and, uh, a- actually, you know, all the lots are sold and, and I would say within Probably the last six, seven years, we've seen, uh, you know, a fair amount of the newer homes that have been, you know, built out here. Um, so it's, uh, you know, it's, they, they're, they're, they're slowly filling up, though. Uh, the lot that he was just referring to, uh, the split lot, um, that was purchased at the same time when I originally built, um, my home. I, uh, I used to own the lot, uh, seventeen, which is, you know, right next to the one we're talking about now. Uh, and the one that did split, uh, is the lot just on the other side of it. So there's a, there's a home, uh, on both of those, uh, split lots right now. I'm not sure if the updated aerial shows that or not, because the, uh, the home, the one home that was on the kind of southern side, uh, was just built within about a little over a year ago.
So, so we're seeing a, a resurgence of interest in these, in these size lots that far from town. That's the interesting thing to me, I guess.
I, I only got about half of what you said there.
Oh, I just was interested in the history of it, as we've been doing some little history lessons today, and, and this is a great opportunity for us to become familiar with the county. Uh, I guess what I'm hearing you say is that, that you're seeing, uh, maybe a, a surge here in the last five, six years in interest in, in lots of these sizes.
Yeah, I'd say so. Uh, yeah, the, the gentleman that, that did the development at first is named Greg Von Krosick. Um, uh, you know, and he kind of designed it, uh, and, uh, and I actually, being that I was the very first lot owner, uh, with them. We, we kind of went and did the, the covenants, as you will, kind of together. Uh, and, and we both talked that, uh, you know, that we would be able to split the lots one time, type of the family split type of thing. Uh, this lot that we're talking about doing right now was actually Greg's lot that he was going to keep for his, his family members. Uh, and I think that was why it had the three, you know, the potential to split it three times. So, uh, but yeah, it, it does seem like it's, you know, in the last, you know, six, seven years or so, something like that, that it's, you know, it's definitely becoming, You know, there's, there's more people moving, moving here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Hanning, do you have any questions for staff?
No, no, thank you. The, the report was very clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Kennedy?
I have no questions either, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And at this point, I don't have any questions. At this point, I'll, um, just procedurally, we, we've heard from the applicant, um, and also applicant's representative. Mr. Peterson or Mr. Erickson, is there anything additionally you'd like to comment on as far as the subdivision application?
No, I, I think we've got, you know, I think we've got everything in there that we need, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Um, at this point, I'll, uh, give a minute or two here for, um, public comment, uh, just as far as procedures concerned. We didn't have any public comment on the zone change, but, uh, I'll, uh, give a minute here for that, so just bear with me. All right, seeing no hands up, we'll, uh, go ahead and close that to public, uh, comment. And at this point, I'm looking, uh, for, uh, from the commission, uh, either a, a approval of the Champ subdivision application, denial, or table the, uh, uh, application.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plats And the subdivision permit for the Champ subdivision preliminary and final plat applications, S D dash zero two dash two one. Based upon and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
I think, uh, Mr. Kennedy Beach, Mr. Hinkley.
I've had more practice.
He's a, he's a, he's a quick on the drop. Good, I agree.
All right, very good. Well, thank you both. Um, I'll go ahead and call roll on this. Mr. Hinkley?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. So, motion carries, uh, the Champ subdivision application, uh, uh, we'll move on to Board of County Commissioners with approval from the zoning Planning and zoning commission. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Peterson.
Um, thank you.
We'll move on now. Uh, thank you, sir, and, uh, we'll move on now with item E being removed from public applications. We'll move on to current planning projects. It looks like, David, you're the one that, uh, is going to fulfill, uh, fill us in on, uh, The proposed amendments to the zoning resolution, uh, special standards for permits within the plat of Centennial. Could you, uh, please, uh, give us a little background on that?
Yeah, so, um, at one of the recent Board of County Commissioners meeting, um, We, the, the Board of County Commissioners asked the planning office to draft a standard, um, to require with permit applications in the Centennial area. Specifically in the platted Centennial area, um, to, To provide a professional survey with their, um, permits. Um, what has been going on for years is that, um, yeah, I don't know, you've probably all been up to Centennial, um, through that area. Um, there's a big A-frame up there that's built in the middle of a county right of way, and there's a, there's Next door or next to that, there's another building that's about halfway in the right of way. I believe that the school was built in a right of way, um, and a lot of other things, and, and so that's led to a lot of vacations and some, uh, you know, of, Of these right of ways, and so, um, it's been problematic lately. Um, there's just been a lot of controversy on what to do with these right of ways. Um, and so what this is, is not to, to, to correct any of that, there's, we've still got a mess, so we've still got things to do there. Uh, but this, we're trying to draft something to basically stop, um, the problem from, from continuing on. Um, by, by providing a survey, um, and then asking that they build with, you know, where the surveyor says to build. Um, we'll, we'll avoid some of these things in the future. Um, you know, the area is so, you know, there's such, such, you know, Steep topography in the area, and the plat was done back in nineteen hundred or whatever it was. Um, in, and I think when they did survey and back then, they didn't do anything on the ground. They just, oh, we'll just draw squares and, you know. Um, I come from Pocatello, Idaho, and there's, there's a place that it's like, I swear it's exactly the same, some of those neighborhoods, like, Did they not see what it looks like here? But, um, so anyways, this is, in, in short, this is, is to help correct that, that issue. And so, um, we had it on the agenda last week. Um, I've worked with the county attorney's office, specifically Jennifer Kern. And I think Peggy looked at it as well and made some changes, and so this is kind of what we came up with. Um, it's for your review and, um, your pleasure of what you would like to, to do next with it, so.
Yeah, for the sake of discussion, I would be happy to move that we, uh, recommend that the county commissioners approve Uh, these, this change to the regulation with regards to the, uh, Centennial plat. And I was, I, I'll shut up for half a minute and see whether we get a second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hinkley. Uh, discussion?
I think this is a great idea. It's been in, in the short time that I've been on now, three and a half, now closer to four and a half years. Anytime anything comes up in Centennial, this has shown up as an issue. And my only question of staff is, I, I wonder if the folks that live within that plat, Whether it wouldn't be less expensive for them to just, everybody bite the bullet and share and have a surveyor come in and Survey everything rather than to have a surveyor come out every time someone wanted to do an accessory building or, or Anything of that nature even, because that, after a while, this is a make surveyor rich Rule here to a certain extent. It, I think in the long run, it'd be cheaper for the residents here if they just Bite the bullet and all split the cost, but that's, that's just my thought.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea. The other option is, is maybe they'll just incorporate and they won't be in the county anymore, so.
A planner can dream, can't they?
Yeah.
My first contact with this was when I was building their water system for them thirty years ago, and I think it was John Erickson who was on the call earlier showed me these maps that he had, that I was sworn to secrecy, that I couldn't, I couldn't take any pictures. And, and there were so many overlapping slices of land and little pieces that had been sold five different times to seven different people. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Kennedy's idea, but wow, you have the, the, this is a knot Rat's nest like we've never seen, and, and maybe it has to be untangled one thread at a time, but, but yeah, I, I've seen enough of it myself to know this is, This is a, a big problem and, and anything we can do to step in that direction. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Hinkley, too. Ms. Hanning, any comments?
No, it, it looks like a, um, a best effort to try to prevent ongoing complications, but it does sound like it. It's not going to make the existing problems vanish for you, but I, I thought your, your effort to come up with language change, uh, looked great.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Um, and I would echo those statements of the fellow commissioners. We'll go ahead and take a vote on this. Um, uh, Mr. Hinkley?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Commissioner, uh, Chairman Moore, my, uh, myself, uh, aye. So, uh, recommendation that, to send, um, that verbiage to amend our regulations to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we'll move on to other items, other announcements. Uh, we did make an adjustment here at the beginning of the meeting. And what that is, is item A will Be on, um, a recent outcome and, uh, that was brought up at a previous meeting about, uh, zoning In Laramie County and the effects of that, and I believe that our, uh, uh, county attorney or civil attorney, uh, Ms. Kern Um, can kind of give us a background on just some of the questions that we had in the previous meeting and what that outcome was. And just for our, our edification and knowledge as part of being on this board. Ms. Kern?
Thanks, Chairman Moore. So the case that we talked about at the last meeting was that Asphalt Specialties versus Laramie County Planning. And that was decided by the Wyoming Supreme Court on February first of this year. And in Cheyenne, or just outside of Cheyenne, Asphalt Specialties was trying to put in a gravel pit or a hard rock permit. Or a hard rock quarry, sorry. And, um, the application was filed with The Cheyenne Planning and Zoning, or zoning, I guess. And they ultimately denied it, and the, then it was appealed by Asphalt Specialties. And it went up to the Supreme Court on the question of whether, there were five questions, but Um, whether or not the commission's decision to deny the application was in excess of their statutory jurisdiction, authority, or limitations, Or lacking statutory authority. Um, In one part of this that is different in Cheyenne or in Laramie County than we are over here was that This piece of land that they were going to put this hard rock quarry on was unzoned within Laramie County. And in Albany County, and talking to David, we do not have any unincorporated parts of Albany County that are unzoned. However, the, this case went through, uh, It's kind of a summary of several of the major cases that have gone on with regard to planning and zoning over the last You know, twenty, twenty-five years. Um, And the court ultimately ruled That counties can only restrict a land use pursuant to zoning. So in this case, The piece that they were going to put the quarry on was unzoned, and the commissioners Argued that the site plan and their Laramie County land use regulations provided enough flexibility To deny an application based on health and safety and all of those things. And the court came back and said that, that they can't do that, that they are required To only make decisions based on what's actually in the zoning. They can, as Ms. Hanning mentioned earlier, and we've all talked about before, you can reference the, um, comprehensive plans. But unless that comprehensive plan has been adopted into the regulations, you can't make it a requirement. Um, and the court also, in quoting the Ford case And Kraut Hamel said that absent zoning, a commission cannot substitute public disapproval for legal authority To deny a proposed project. So The result, the big result of all of this Now got wrapped up into legislation that was in front of, um, The legislative bodies during this last legislative session, and it is House Bill zero one five eight. Which has passed both House and Senate with signatures, and it's waiting now on the governor's signature. And what that does is it, this House Bill one fifty-eight goes through the statutes, section nine eight, three oh one, fifteen, one, six oh two, eighteen, five, two oh one, and specifically adds language that says local land use plans may guide local governments in adopting or amending local zoning regulations. However, such plans shall not be construed as a substitute for or equivalent to duly enacted local zoning regulations, which have the force and effect of law. And then it goes on to say how those local land use plans can be implemented. Clarifies that if there's a conflict between a zoning regulation and a land use plan, the zoning regulation controls states that no local government can require that a land use or physical development be consistent with a local land use plan unless the applicable provisions of the local land use plan have been incorporated into the zoning regulation. And that nothing can allow a local government to use a local land use plan as authority to deny or restrict a permissible land use or physical development, which is not restricted or prohibited under existing zoning regulations. So in light of this case and the legislature, David and I talked earlier this week or emailed earlier this week or late last week. There are some other regulations that have gone into effect. But I think in light of this case and in light of other zoning regulations, David said that have gotten into effect that haven't made it into our zoning resolution yet. We need to sit down and go through our zoning resolution and make sure that what we have in there is compliant with existing case law and now this existing statute that presumably will be signed by the governor and will be in effect as of July one. Does anybody have any specific questions I can answer for you? Or I can forward copies of the case and the bill to anybody who might want them? Or I can get them to David and he can get them out to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. I see, burn your hands up. Go right ahead.
Fascinating stuff. What what sort of thing? I know you haven't done that yet, but what are we looking for in our regulations? What what might be noncompliant? Are there some examples to kind of help us understand this?
Anything in the regulation, in our zoning resolution that would require compliance with a comprehensive plan would not be permissible or that would give any of either this commission or the county commissioners, the ability to deny a an applicant based on noncompliance with the comprehensive plan would need to be removed. And there's a change to the family law exemption that David and I talked about also that actually went into effect April first, not family law, the family subdivision exemption that went into law on April first that needs to be changed back to what it was before they've gone back to the ten-year requirement instead of the five-year requirement.
So so if zoning said, well, the whole whole point of zoning is to implement the the comprehensive plan. So if the zoning said you have to do what the comp plan says, that would be illegal. But if it repeated what the comp plan said, then that would make it legal. Is that the distinction here?
Yes, yes. That is essentially what it says. And in this is regulation changes. So any changes made to the regulations would come as a recommendation from this commission to the county commissioners, who would then put it out to public comment for forty-five days and have public hearing and all of those things before anything could be implemented as a whole.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just point out, the only place that I know that we even reference the comprehensive plan in our zoning regulations is with the land use change. We do have a provision in there that says that we do need to analyze the comprehensive plan. That's one of the findings we have is to look at the comp plan and make sure that we're following the general, you know, general recommendations or whatever it says of the of the plan. So I I guess that would be the item that we'd have to analyze to see if that's okay to be in there or not. Which, you know, if we can't do that, that's kind of interesting because, you know, our our plan is is basically, you know, what we want to see in the county, right? So if we don't have direction that we can use, I I mean, I don't know how you put that in zoning, you know? You you can't use it as direction. And we've never used it, I don't think, authoritatively, at least since I've been here. It's been more of a recommendation, but it's good to have that information. So I think Jennifer will explain to me a little bit better at some point, you know, how this is really going to impact that. So I I don't I don't know if it eliminates that or not. So that's just my comments, so.
Thank you, David. I see, Mr. Hinckley, your hands up. Go right ahead.
Just a question for Commissioner Kennedy. You you wanted to bring this to our attention. What was there some particular aspect of it that that you caught your attention?
Part of it was that and and part of it was the the thought of the legislature was that generally we don't look at case law a lot like attorneys do. We tend to look at statutes. And and that was their reasoning for for essentially moving this decision into statute so that it was more easily discernible by the general public, how how the process was to work. And yes, there are some differences there, but the other just was essentially the planning commission in Laramie County denied that permit just based on their comprehensive plan. And and it was unzoned. And so they they technically didn't have any authority to deny that because it was unzoned as well. Although in the zoned areas, I think it would be permitted in an in an agricultural use area, much like the one that we approved earlier today. It's a very similar area. It's actually, I think it's actually quite a bit further, not just a little southwest. I think it's actually on along the Harriman Road somewhere, quite a ways out west of Cheyenne. And that that was why I had the question was I I just was reasonably sure we had at least one or two places in the zoning ordinance that referred back to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Hinckley, see your hands up again?
Oh, no, I I think that's 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 fascinating. I had not understood that zoning wasn't kind of wall to wall and and maybe Mr. Gerch could give us a little history there. Having grown up in Wyoming, I know it's been controversial since I was the tiniest kid. So did we have to zone in Albany County? Or how did we, how did we get our zoning? Why did we do wall to wall and Laramie County didn't?
I I don't know why, I guess, we did it and they didn't. I just know we did it. We we actually were the subject of a case at one point back, I think in the nineties or whatever. I can't remember what the case was. If it was the one with the dad, the adult place downtown and or down south up here. And basically, we have what was called the Loomis Land Use Management System, which was, I guess, more of a comp plan than anything. But we're using it in tandem as a comp plan and as regulations. Well, because of that, it got struck down. They said, no, you can't do that. So right after that happened in nineteen ninety-seven, we we drafted our first real zoning resolution so that we could implement and basically regulate land use in the county. But there are other counties like, what's the county that's River? Whatever County Riverdale's in.
Fremont.
Fremont, they don't have zoning. There's no zoning there, so.
And David, I I lived in Laramie County, east of Cheyenne for about fifteen years. And they, at that time anyway, and they may have expanded the area, but essentially there was a thirty-six mile square around Cheyenne that was zoned. And then outside of that was unzoned at that time anyway, in, oh, let's say, two thousand six or seven, under the assumption that nobody would want to live there. And or and or that the municipalities that were out there would take care of any zoning or annexation things that went on. And I do think they have I do think that they can't subdivide below the thirty-five acres in statute, but without some sort of plat from the county. But other than that, I don't think there are any restrictions, truly. And I know it's been a problem with with water use because domestic isn't regulated as as irrigation is, and it's a problem in for some of the irrigators that are downstream of where all of the the ranchettes are, the east of Cheyenne.
Chairman Moore, this is Jennifer again. The case David was talking about was the Krauthemel case. And in response to Keith, I think it is still true that Laramie County is largely unzoned. It'll be interesting to see what happens after this decision if they decide to go through and zone the rest just so they make sure they can have some authority as they go forward. But at least when this Asphalt Specialties came through, which I think was in two thousand, it was in eight, nine, twenty eighteen. They were did were not entirely zoned as a county.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. And thank you, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Hinckley. Ms. Hanning, do you have any any questions or any comments or anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
No, it's a it's an interesting discussion and it's in a way, it's a little bit too bad that all the community effort that went into making the comprehensive plan, it's too bad that it doesn't have a little more force behind it just because of all the effort that went into it. But I but I see how the courts have decided it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Hinckley, any other follow-up questions or?
Well, here's a here's a thought, but as David brought up Fremont County, this probably in the gosh, early seventies, one of the county commissioners, I think in Fremont County, he says, planners are the spawn of the devil. So that's how intense the feelings have been over the years. We feel better about you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Appreciate that. I guess my two cents, if I had anything, I since I've been on the board, we've had discussions about the comprehensive plan and and but use it, it's it's used as a guide and it should be a guide to help us make tough decisions because we do have to make tough decisions. I mean, we had a decision today that was split evenly between this commission, you know, and and there's going to be things like that to happen. And you know, the the comprehensive plan is a tool for for us to know what it is. I mean, you look at some of the things that are in it and it's kind of unfortunate because it's really not specific. I think it's intended to not be real specific either. I mean, you you just look at the wind turbine issue and you look on one page where it will say, we want to utilize clean and efficient energy. And then on the very next page, page, it'll say, we want to provide vistas and views for everybody and and keep those views. And and that has been a hot button issue that we've had to deal with for the last year. And 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 we're gonna still have that to bring up to deal with. But at the end of the day, the 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 law is within the regulation. And hopefully, we can incorporate and use the comprehensive plan the best we can to use it and help our decision-making. But I think that that's you know, about the the two cents that I have. But anyways, are there any other comments or anything the commission has that needs to be brought up at this meeting? Otherwise, we'll move on to citizen comments. Mr. Hinckley, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Kennedy, anything else? And Ms. Kern, thank you for your update on that. And I think it is important for us to all be aware of what other counties in Wyoming and what statutes and what court cases come forward to help our knowledge and help us with our ability of being on this planning and zoning board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just point your attention to the next meeting. It'll be May twelfth and it's going to be at four o'clock. So this is our change in meeting time.
Excuse me, David. Sorry, I I said citizen comment. I meant announcement, so you're correct. So yeah, you you are correct. So the next meeting will be May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at four P M. And I think the thing that I'd like to hear from the commission on is at this point with COVID nineteen, with vaccinations, how are how how is everybody feeling? Mr. Hinckley, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Kennedy, at some point, we we should move these back to the county building. But how does everybody feel about that? And what thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I I would defer to to David and Jennifer as far as the commissioners are kind of in charge of whether or not we can meet there at the commissioner's room. I'm fine with doing that. But I think it's good to have this option open for for especially for members of the public as well.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just say that if we as a commission and staff want to meet, you know, that that's that's okay. We can still do the Zoom option. The commissioner's room is now set up so that we can we've got a big television in there, basically, that you can see the the folks on there. I'd have to talk to I T, you know, and just make sure I understand all the logistics of doing that in person. But honestly, you you know, we won't go back to allowing public in, you know, in our meetings until the commissioners make that that recommendation or or basically change that. But and I think maybe we'll still keep the Zoom option. I don't know. It's it's kind of nice to have that option for folks. But but yeah, I think it's really up to you guys in your comfort level with, you know, with the pandemic and everything. So staff is wanting to do whatever, so yeah.
Well, thank you, David. Mr. Hinckley?
Yeah, I I had my first meeting with a group last week in about a year. All all of us had been vaccinated and were past the second shot enough to have had it take effect. And and if if I would feel comfortable and would welcome the opportunity to get together once we're all in that status. And then I would echo what what others have said that I I think we've all learned over the period that these Zoom meetings are are extremely useful and convenient for people who might not otherwise be able to attend. So I certainly hope that we continue to have Zoom meetings available to everyone. But I share the interest in let's all get together if we can do so safely. And and my my feeling of safety is that if everybody involved has is fully vaccinated, then I would feel comfortable, you know, face to face inside meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley, Ms. Hanning.
Thank you for asking about this, Mr. Chair. I I agree, I'm comfortable with every if everybody's agreeing to get vaccinated with holding meeting indoors. And I guess the only caveat or what I'm always telling my kids is it it's sometimes hard to make firm decisions until until an event approaches and you're looking at what the county numbers are at the time and and sort of making making those little adjustments as you go as we've all been probably doing this past year. So so I'd support it, just the caveat of making sure our our numbers stay low in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanning. And we also have one member that's not here with us today, and I think it'd be important to visit with him. So I will reach out to Commissioner Spiegelberg and ask him how he feels about in-person meetings at this time. Our next meeting is May twelfth at four P M. And at this point, let's just plan on that date. And maybe we can, after risen with John and and seeing his comfort level, if what's allowed at the at the courthouse if what's allowed at the courthouse, the commission and staff and public can join by Zoom. I do like the fact that even, even when we do resume in-person meetings or get back to normal like it was, I think the Zoom option is a great option for the public to be able to we've had in the past. I mean, we've had people come from great lengths to join our meetings because we didn't have the option of Zoom. So I would prefer to keep that option, even if we are in person. And even if we get to the point where we're back to normal, where the public can come to the meetings. But I'll visit with Commissioner Spiegelberg. And at this time, we'll just go ahead and plan on having a meeting at 4:00 PM. And whether the meeting is going to be like it is right now on Zoom or if we elect to meet in person, just commission staff with the option of the public meeting on Zoom. But I will get with Commissioner Spiegelberg. We'll let Mr. Gertz know. And then we'll definitely have this sent out to commission and so that everybody knows.
Mr. Chairman, would you like any motion to that effect? Or do you want to just leave it be?
You know, I don't necessarily think we need a motion. I think that date and time set, we're going to have a meeting at that date and time, whether it's the five of us in person with staff or if it's on Zoom. I don't think we necessarily need to have a motion. And I'll, we'll reach out to every commission member and let them know because the public's still going to be on Zoom. So the public, if the public's listening, it's still the same for them. It's just the five of us and staff. So I'll reach out to him and figure out what works best at this point. I think we're inching closer to getting back together. But Ms. Hanning is 100% correct on the fact that I think it's something that we got to watch, you know, because maybe today the numbers are down. But maybe in, you know, maybe in a month, that might be different. And so I think we need to have the ability to stay open and be able to make that decision on, you know, just watch with the public, and that's important. So and all of us, being on here, concerned about all our families and friends and staff that they get paid and have to be there. So I think that that's important to acknowledge. So with that being said, I don't see very many people on for public comment. But I will give a moment here for citizen comment. If there's any other comment that anybody on the commission has, I mean, right now would be a good time to bring it up. If there's any other comment or question, anything?
I'll just make the comment that at the next meeting, I think I'm going to wear shorts, flip-flops, and Hawaiian shirts. So that's for you, Keith.
And be in Mexico.
The one thing that I will bring up is, and just for the commission to keep in the back of their mind and do their homework on, all of us, me included, would be good is, is we do have an application coming forward for the Rail Tie project. And, you know, that we looked at those regulations last year, kind of took precedent at the time and set the aqua for APOZ regulations kind of second to it while we were doing it because there was a lot of public involvement. And we listened to a lot of public testimony on it. And we're also, again, going to give a lot of time, or I would prefer to give a lot of time for public comment. But Rail Tie application is going to be heading our way next month. And so next month can be a longer meeting and be prepared to listen. And we have, as far as commission, we have Mr. Gertz and Ms. Curran. And if we have any questions, and I'm kind of pointing this at Ms. Hanning and Mr. Hinckley because you are new on, on through that process. But use them or any information that you might need just to help you understand because we did go through those regulations for about, you know, the better half of last year. And just to help you out and use them if need be. And I certainly know I do. I probably bother David more than I should. But just keep that in the back of your mind. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hinckley.
Yeah, is that, so that application is in front of us now? I mean, I guess, maybe go ahead and send that out. I totally appreciate your thought that some of us need to get up to speed on that and might have hoped that we could just dodge that particular bullet. I guess not. So if I'm understanding the status of it correctly, they have made their application under the old rules. County Commission is considering changing the rules, and they've got EAC working on that. But we will be proceeding under the existing rules to process this application. And so maybe a little package from you guys, David, specifically. Here are the current regulations, and here is the application would be helpful to me at least.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Chair, the application is online already. I'll send you the link to it, but it's under our projects page, under planning, the planning office. So if you look at, get under planning and then go to projects, there's, the application is on there. It's going to be too big for me to send out the entire package. I don't, I mean.
It's only 1,400 pages.
Yeah. But I think I will try to find the important parts, the things that we're looking at and send out, you know, in our packet. But I will also, I'll get the current regulations that we're working under for the wind energy permit and send that out to everybody so that they have that. They can just look at that and not have to worry about looking at anything else. So those are online too, but I don't know if you guys have keep, you know, what we've worked on and get approved. So but I'll send those out too, so you can just look at those. So if there's anything else, let me know. So.
Thank you, David. Any other comments or questions? And seeing that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Who is that from? I couldn't tell.
This is Burn.
Okay, Mr. Hinckley, a motion to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Hinckley. Do we have a second?
Keith just seconded with his, with the.
Well, I know. Second on that, it's serious business.
I came to second from Ms. Hanning. Are you just trying to keep this meeting going on because you're enjoying it too much?
Yeah, I'll second it, but I wanted to give credence to Mr. Kennedy because he was the one who offered the second first.
Very good. We got a motion from Mr. Hinckley, a second from Mr. Kennedy. And Mr. Hinckley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Moore, myself, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Good meeting, everybody, and look forward to seeing you next month. Take care.